Okay, it's one thirty. It is the time for the special public meeting of the Board of UNA County Commissioners, March twelfth at one thirty PM. If you haven't before you leave, please sign in back there. And also, put your phones on quiet if you haven't. Okay. We'll start off with the prayer. Will be by Jeremy Raymond, followed by Jenny Byrd with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear kindly father, we're grateful to come before this day. In this meeting as presidents and leaders of our community, we ask that thy spirit will be here with us so that we can accomplish the needs of our area and the needs of our citizens and best know how that help them. And we're grateful for this valley in which we have to live and through the moisture that we receive. Bless us so that we can all have a good day today and that this meeting will go well without any interruptions. And we're grateful for all these things to say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Please be up me. I've got my pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, welcome, welcome. Today, each entity will present their one-year list first and respond to any questions. They may clarify projects that are on the list. If you're applying for a project this year, it must be on the one-year list. Also, each entity must have completed the capital assessment inventory and returned it to the UNA Basin Association of Governments. The list today provided has been corrected for each entity at their request from the mailings as of February eighth of twenty-four. This letter was sent out to each of you to obtain public comment on the entity you represent, then compiled and sent back to U-BAG. U-BAG cannot add or delete projects without consent from the entity and are strictly prohibited from doing so. After this hearing, a new list will be compiled and sent for one more review prior to being submitted to the Office of Housing and Community Development with a deadline of one May twenty-twenty-four. In addition to the county area priority, which is why the projects were presented verbally and voted on at the end of the meeting after everyone has presented, each applicant is required to complete the applicant priority. As a reminder, when CIB projects are submitted to the state of Utah, another copy must be sent to the regional planner at U-BAG for his review and also to be placed on the agenda for the next U-BAG board meeting. If you miss this deadline, your application will not be sent to the state of Utah per U-BAG instructions. If you haven't, please sign the attendance sheet provided. Please provide a current email, address, and contacts. Two contacts from each entity receive the official packet. If you want that changed, please note on the sheet. And Kevin has an announcement to make that you need to be very attentive to.
So, just real quick, we have this flyer in the back for the CIB tutorial. This year, it'll be in Duchesne. If you plan on applying for funds this year, attendance is mandatory. So, if you can't make it, have someone from your staff or your board that's present. It'll be Thursday, April eleventh at the Duchesne Centennial Events Center at ten o'clock, and the state CIB staff will be out to answer any questions and to go over the application process.
Okay. Ashley Valley Sewer Management Board.
So, if I can, they contacted me yesterday and told me they had a conflicting meeting with the Utah retirement system and asked that I read their projects for them. Their first project is an INI study, which is for infiltration and inflow sewer study for a total cost of five hundred thousand dollars, and that the board would provide half match for that for submission date of October twenty-twenty-four trimester. And just as a reminder, if you are applying for planning studies, you do have to come up with fifty percent of the match. So, and if it's one hundred thousand dollars or less, you do not have to go before the CIB board. State staff will review that and get funding to you almost immediately. So, just keep that in the back of your mind if you do want to do a planning study. Second, they have a master plan and sewer model for a sewer plan performed and then put recommendations into the model for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they will need to come up with one hundred and twenty-five, so that needs to be adjusted. And that's their projects.
Okay, Ashley Valley Water, yeah, wherever it is, WSID, whoever you are, get up here. The Springs people.
Hey Kevin, I have a conflicting meeting. Can you do my project? Ashley Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District, we have seven projects on the list this year, or on the one-year list. The first one is the Ashley Springs Measuring Water Quality Structure Improvements Creek, Waterway Crossing, and other infrastructure to get to the springs. Project total eight hundred and ninety-five, asking the CIB for eight hundred and forty-five. Second one is a raw water line relining. This is from the springs down to the treatment plants, twenty-four inch line that's over forty years old, so we want to reline that and keep service to the valley. Third one, water and sewer studies. So, this would be hopefully a half-match, half-grant with the CIB, but sewer hydraulic model in conjunction with what Sewer Management Board is doing, impact fee study, master plan update, and capital assessment study. That's a hundred and fifty thousand. Sewer system enhancements, this is in the Ashley area. I know that's loosely defined, but primarily in the Ashley area, north of the valley, north of Main Street, south of five hundred north is kind of the intent, eight hundred thousand. Fire flow project, this is replacing six-inch and other undersized lines throughout the valleys with fire hydrants, one million, two hundred and fifty. Water rights study and land acquisition, or not water rights study, sorry, acquiring water rights and land acquisition, one million, five hundred thousand. And then the last one is a regionalization project. Regionalization by Division of Drinking Water is defined as when you take multiple public systems and combine them into one. There's a subdivision on the south end of the valley that is its own public water system that is not in compliance currently. And so, we've gotten some Division of Drinking Water funds for that, but this is supplemental as the project costs more than we anticipated. But, any questions on any of those seven?
Sorry, I just, could you elaborate a little bit more on number six, the water rights and land acquisition?
So, as we all know, or I think everybody knows, Ashley Valley is out of water, so we want to pursue, there's several decreed water rights in the valley that are potential options to buy, and I don't want to say names of people, and then other water shares that might come available with different negotiations. And that may require a land acquisition. For example, if we were to find a farmer who wants to sell their land and their water, we would have to buy the land to go with it. So, something along those lines. It's not super-defined yet, but we do have feelers out to try and acquire more water primarily, but land may have to come with it.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. On number seven, the total project cost is four hundred thousand dollars. Did you say you had supplemental?
So, that's what we would request. The total project already is a little over a million, and we have six hundred thousand that we've gotten a grant from the Division of Drinking Water. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
See, that wasn't real painful. Ballard City. You're on, Mayor.
Injured, as usual. Got a few projects this year for Ballard. This printing is a little small, so I'm gonna have to take my glasses off. First project is highway sidewalks and lighting, and this is basically from Big O, Tars, fifteen-hundred East to twenty-five-hundred to complete that. It's been a real unsafe area. People have been walking along the road there, and it's been a safety concern. That's two hundred and fifty thousand we're asking for. Ballard City street maintenance. We have so many trucks that are traveling our roads. We have approximately seventeen to twenty oil wells in the city. We've got a big disposal well that's proposed that's going to be drilled on two thousand South, so majority of our roads are all impacted by oil and gas. And we've got behind on our maintenance and these big, heavy trucks. I could list the trucks, but it'd probably take me ten or fifteen minutes to go through all the trucks that travel our roads, but they are extremely heavy loads, and we want to promote and ensure that oil and gas is, you know, moved forward in our city to a certain degree, other than we're the ones that always have to pay, it seems like. But we got that for two million dollars. I'll go ahead and do the Ballard Water Improvement District. We've got upper-zone water system improvements. Upgrade water line sizes and extend lines. There again. And extend lines on two miles of pipeline prior to hooking into a new water source. So, well, it's being, it's going to be drilled this year, and it's two and a half million dollars. Next one is the thirty-five-hundred East Transmission Line. It's one mile of water pipeline, and that's for two million dollars. Any questions?
You gonna put that sidewalk on the north or the south side of the?
North side, I think. You know, there's sidewalk along Big O and the hospital gym there, so we just tie into that and do that on the north for now.
Have you approached DOT in putting that in?
Well, we've tried to, you know, go in for some other monies over the years through DOT and through the feds, and we haven't been successful yet. But if money is available, we apply, but last time, we weren't successful.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Jensen.
Hello, I'm Trudy Wheeler with Jensen Water. We have three projects on the list. The first one being a meter and communication upgrade where we're replacing our meters with radio read capabilities for two million dollars. The second one on our list is install three miles of eight-inch line on the Red Wash Road. Number three, oh, and the first one's two million dollars, the second one is five million dollars. Number three, replace aging lines from six-inch to eight-inch for fire flow for two million dollars. And number one would be June twenty-twenty-four, number two, October twenty-twenty-four, number three, February twenty-twenty-five. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mazur.
So, the Mazur Water Improvement District was called away. They've had to shut off some water, I guess, unexpectedly. So, first project, first priority, a million-dollar ask for water system improvements. They'd like to replace three creek crossing, Ashley Creek from twenty-five-hundred West, and Thornburg and Wilkins. Replace trans district line twenty-five-hundred West from twenty-five-hundred North, and so they're just redoing some of their lines. So, million-dollar ask from CIB. Second priority would be the sewer system improvements. They'll be replacing, as you can see in that box, a lot of the lines, Ashley Creek at twenty-five-hundred West, fifteen-hundred North from Painted Hills subdivision, two thirty-five-hundred Wests on fifteen-hundred North, and then thirty-five-hundred Wests from five hundred North to twenty-five-hundred North, and so on. So, actually, quite a few different projects in that one. The ask is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's Mazur.
Did you say a hundred and fifty, or did you say four fifty?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Naples is up.
Our engineering department couldn't be here, so I'm here. Can't see either. On our list is just mainly street projects. Our first one would be the twenty-five-hundred South Street. If we can ever get the canal thing done, this is just to finish it off, because we're looking at on the north side of the road, is where we'd pipe that with the Central Canal, and then we would have to go in and install the rest of the road. That would be the two thousand East. We do have two grants currently to finish two thousand East up to twenty-five-hundred South. That's just if we can't get the third phase. On fifteen-hundred South, we currently are gonna redo some work on it. We have a partial grant for it, but it won't do a full fix. That's just if we ever decide to widen the dugway and do a few things to it, but if we have to expand that. And then the other two are just road and with one of our major subdivisions. It's a high priority subdivision, but it's one that's not been done yet, so.
One of the older ones in.
One of the older ones even in the county, yeah. Those are ours.
Okay.
So, quick question.
No, thanks.
Does he need to have a mic?
Quick ask. So. So, right now, we're just doing the maintenance to it. If we decide to expand it, it won't. It would just be to, you know where the dugway is on fifteen-hundred South goes down? If we have to go in and buy more land and more things, that's just what we would do. So, right now, we're doing stuff to it, I guess if you wanted, but we're not planning on expanding that at this moment. We're just gonna go in and do the potholes and do a two-inch overlay, chip and seal on the road to, from ours to the county line. So, that's what we're doing now, but if we got into it and had to expand it and the hill caved in and we had to go further, then we'd have to go for more land. So, that's why it's there.
Okay, that's the last free question. From now on, you need to come up and get the microphone. She's not picking you up from a distance.
Yep, that gets you. So, I can explain it more to you later if you need more. Yeah, we won't for that, because we're match-funding what we're doing right now. Yeah, we're doing a sixty-forty split right now, so yeah.
Okay, O'Ree Park.
No, Trident. You're right.
So, O'Ree Park, they are asking for a total of two hundred, two-point-five million from CIB. The total project cost is four million, five hundred thousand. This will be for water source improvements, to acquire water rights and diversify water sources for stability of services. Currently, they're getting water from the tribe, and with the issues the tribe has on their lines, when the tribe has a line break, the water gets shut down, and it's just our tank levels out there that supply the water. So, looking for some funding to diversify and utilize some water rights and shares that they have available to them. Any questions?
Oh, my name is Isaac Hatch.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, thanks, Isaac.
And I'm also representing Trident, too.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. So, Trident Point Water, their first one is, and the total ask from CIB is eighty thousand, and if I need to correct that to be half, I will do that, so let's just go fifty-fifty on that. The total, so I guess the total ask then would be, what is it, would be? Sixty.
Five.
Sixty-five. So, the reason why we need that is we've done a lot of new upgrades, and the rate of connections over the past two years has exceeded what our old master plan entailed. So, be able to have a better updated master plan to represent the changes we've made in our water system. And it is a total of two million dollars. It's mainline improvements, replace undersized mainlines to, in the off-streets from our normal mainlines that we've updated recently to provide fire flow and also extra connections to people there. And I think there's, I was just noticing here, is that a, I think the full ask is two million. Yeah, there's one last zero there. I apologize for that. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question?
No, I'm next.
Alright, next is UNA County MBA.
Yep, it's gonna be Jenny.
Jenny Byrd, you went to MBA. The first project we have is the cemetery equipment building for one million dollars, and we're asking the CIB for five hundred thousand dollars, and that will be applied for in June of this year. The second project is a search and rescue building, and I need to correct that description to include purchase and construct a metal building for search and rescue equipment, training rooms, and bathroom. That's for one million dollars. We're requesting five hundred thousand dollars and apply in the October trimester. Third project is the county building entrance ADA remodel, and that is for one million dollars, requesting five hundred thousand dollars, apply in the February trimester. And then the fourth project is road department building, build a new building for the road department at ten million dollars, requesting five million dollars, the February trimester of next year. Questions?
Okay, thank you. UNa Fire Expression.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jeremy Raymond, Director of UNa Fire District. So, we have two projects. The first project is a Jensen Rescue Truck. This is to replace their existing rescue truck. They run medical as well as cover quite a bit of area from Jensen all the way to the Colorado line for extracations. So, they are in need of a new truck to replace their aging existing ones, so we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars. We'd request five hundred thousand from the CIB in February twenty-twenty-five, and yes, on the Cassie. On the brush trucks, I want to say the district has one brush truck. So, this would give a new brush truck for each of the five stations, and the oldest brush truck we have is a nineteen-eighty-five GMC. So, they are getting old and outdated and are needing updated. So, that would be for two million, one hundred thousand dollars, same amount on the CIB in February of twenty-twenty-five, and yes, on the Cassie. Any question?
No questions? Okay. UNS S D one.
If no one is here, I'll go ahead and speak, present those. The first one is a note that we're looking at, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the UNA Transportation Special Service District is being reorganized. So, we will be looking at changing all the road and trails projects to the UNA Transportation Special Service District, but for now, they're under UNS S D one. So, the first one is Independence Road. We'd like to widen and reconstruct with some alignment corrections. The request is twenty-seven million, and the total project is twenty-seven million. Shows to be presented in twenty-twenty, February of twenty-twenty-five, and yes, on Cassie. The second one is the pedestrian trails. Improve Ashley Central Canal Trail and other pedestrian trails throughout the county. Two-point-five million total project and two-point-five request CIB, June of twenty-twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie. The third one is Glen Bench, to reconstruct five miles of Glen Bench Road. Total project, six million, request from CIB is six million, and that will be June of twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie. Number four, Fiddler Road, improve six miles of pavement and twelve of gravel on Fiddler Road. Total request, seven million, CIB request, seven million, June of twenty-twenty-four, yes, on Cassie. Number five is the Stanton Road. Improve eleven miles of Stanton Road. Total fifteen million, CIB request fifteen million, June of twenty-twenty-four. Number six is Steinecker Service Canal Trail. Establish, improve the Steinecker Service Canal Trail at a total cost of three million. CIB request, three million, June of twenty-twenty-four, yes, on Cassie. Number seven, Sadler Bridge. Improve the Sadler Bridge on Ashley Creek at a total of two million, request from CIB, two million, June of twenty-twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie. Number eight, twenty-five-hundred West Bridge. Improve the twenty-five-hundred West Bridge on Ashley Creek at a total cost of two million with the request from CIB of two million, June of twenty-four, yes, on Cassie. Number nine is, now we're into the, more the UNA Recreation requests, but it still will be through UNS S D one. Indoor sports facility, outdoor pool splash pad, construct and operate an indoor sports facility as well as an outdoor pool splash pad. Total cost, fifteen million, CIB request, fifteen million, October of twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie. Number ten is golf course irrigation replacement. Install an irrigation system at the golf course at a total cost of one-point-five million with a CIB request of one-point-five and requesting that in October of twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie. Number eleven is softball complex on the K property, which is where the rec center sits right now, or the community center. Install a softball complex on that property at a cost, total cost of seventeen million. CIB request seventeen million, requesting June of twenty-four, yes, on Cassie. And number twelve would be the park infrastructure upgrades. There are many of our parks that have had some deferred maintenance and need to be updated and brought into safety and code. Add cost, total cost of one million with a CIB request of one million, requested October of twenty-four, and yes, on Cassie.
Any questions on a few of those? Okay, no questions? UN Water Conservancy District. Okay. They're missing in action? They're missing in action, so let's go with Vernal City.
So, I have to apologize on this one. I said the print wrong. You're first to arrive, and then the rest didn't print, so I, I'm sorry, but we do have some projects.
Okay, so the paper shows two. We have seven projects on our list. Keith to Spain, Vernal City. Our first project is a downtown revitalization project with public improvements to the Sage Block and the 711 Blocks. Those are the two blocks north of Main Street on either side of Vernal Avenue. The request to CIB is 2 million dollars, and that's what we perceive the project cost as. That'd be a February 2025 application, and all of our projects are on the CASI. So, the second project, street improvements. This is for chip seal and, and other improvements on our, on our main traveled streets, 100 South, 100 North, 500 South, 500 North, Vernal Avenue, and others listed there. The city would be putting in 250,000 on a 2 million dollar project, total project cost. Third project, water system improvements. These would be replacing old and undersized water lines, taking care of lead service lines and so forth. Total project cost, 5 million dollars. Ask of the CIB, 5 million dollars in October 24, application. Fourth project, sewer improvements, sewer system improvements. 100 North Sewer Line, basically from probably about 1,000 West to 500 East. And that's a project cost of 2.5 million with the same amount being requested of the CIB, and also in October 2024, application. Fifth project, stormwater improvements. This would be to do a stormwater master plan, 100,000 dollars. This would be anticipated as a 50/50 through staff review, October 2024, application.
Did you say what the cost of that was?
100,000 dollars total.
100,000, okay.
Yeah, 50,000 coming from the city, 50 from the CIB. Sixth project, sewer hydraulic model and master plan update. In coordination with the other sewer districts, we'd be looking at updating the master plan there. 150,000 dollars total, total project, 45,000 from other entities and 105 from the CIB. Although, I think I wanna change that to be 50 and 100 to match their limits. That'd be a February 2025 project.
It's not a 50/50, it's a?
No, this one, this one would be 100,000 from the CIB and?
50.
50 from the, from the city. Although, they won't, that doesn't make sense either, though. It'd be 75 and 75. And then the last, final project for Vernal City, water development purchases. So, this would be water rights for municipal needs, and we have a 1.5 million estimated total project cost with 500,000 coming from the city and a million request to the CIB in February 2025.
Was the last, the sewer hydraulic update February, or was it October?
It was February 2025.
It was February, too. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Now comes the fun part. You'd vote on, right? So, does somebody wanna start? What would you like for the number one project?
So, you'll just vote as presented?
Oh, anybody wanna change as presented, or do you wanna keep it the way it was presented to y'all, in that order?
I think we're good with moving forward with as presented. And?
Here's your last chance.
It needs to be one of us, right? Anyone? Okay.
Anybody? Okay.
I'll second.
And we have a motion to approve it as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, pass unanimously. Anything else we need to do, CIB?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that. Say it again.
I just need to announce this really quick.
Yes, you better.
On April 24th, over at the UNA Conference Center, we'll be having the First Annual Government in the Basin Training Seminar. We've got a lot of different entities from the state coming out to provide training on land use, subdivision ordinances, past legislation that towns, cities, and counties should have known about and incorporated, but might not remember. Also, current legislation that's going to affect how those entities run. In addition to that, we'll also have some training and some information come on, on missing middle income housing. We'll also talk about, we'll have a panel discussion on growing water wise when it comes to your general plans and different things like that, too. So, I've also received a phone call from Mike. He's with the Utah APA, and if you are AICPA certified and you would like to receive some credits, they're also willing to offer those as well if you come to that. So, it should be a fantastic training. It is free, and there will be food, and it will be fantastic. So, anyway, so, if you'd like to sign up, I'll have laptop here, and you can sign up with me, or you can get, you can just register through the flyer. So, it'll be from 3 o'clock until 8 o'clock. Dinner will be served around 5 o'clock, and so, it should be a great meeting. So, thank you.
Anything else?
I, I did have one thing, okay, that's, I'm sure was in our CIB training. But on our sheet, when it's, like, the last, what, the last few columns, when it says "other funding sources, list entities," or "funding allocated from other funding sources," how are those different? And do you put what you're putting there as that entity contributing, or does that not go on here? That was where I got a little confused.
Thank you for the question. So, last year, the state of Utah wanted to make all the state uniform in how their CIB lists were compiled. There were some discrepancies between different regions. So, last year, this is the, the version that came out. If you remember, in years prior, there used to be a, a loan grant mix that you were asking for. That's no longer the case because the, the CIB Board has adopted a tool that calculates what you should get loan versus grant. So, that, that's one of the changes that you see on here. So, there's a total CIB request that you're requesting. So, you'll request that amount, and that'll go into the tool. So, to answer some of the questions that, that's also maybe different on here, and I know that probably is going more in depth than what you were even asking, but?
Oh, this is great.
So, what we have here, obviously, you list your entity, and then another difference this, this time around is there used to just be a project title. They're trying to get away from general, being general and being more specific on what your project actually is. So, that you have a name for your project, but then also describing what that project is, so that you can be more specific and show that you're planning for the, for the future, and that you actually have this project on your radar. And then, your estimated total cost should be what your, what the whole project will cost with or without CIB. And then, the other funding sources, so listing where that would come from. So, whether that's coming from your city, county, or district, or if it's a federal grant, or if it's another state grant, listing what that entity is, and then how much, that next column is how much they're contributing to the project. So, probably the simplest that we could see is that number one project on the list. They have the 500,000 dollars, and then the district is contributing 250,000 dollars. And so, the total request that they're asking is 250,000, because you have to match that with a grant. So, if there's other specific questions about how that's listed, or did that help? Answer Commissioner Norton.
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. And hopefully, if you guys have more questions, please reach out, and we'll work through this. This is a work in progress. We have until May to get this completely fixed and ready to go. So, if we've made errors, please let us know, and we'll get it adjusted.
Thank you.
Anything further?